We all ready? We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll go ahead and approve the agenda. Anybody got any additions or...
No.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there anything in there? You got questions for Tim or any staff? And I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Paul. We have first. Do I have second? Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. There's no visitors to the council. One thing under the mayor's report, I just wanted to remind everybody now that it's getting nice out, there's gonna be a lot more kids out on bicycles and just out walking. And just 'cause there's a crosswalk doesn't mean they're gonna push a button or look where they're going, 'cause I just had four kids run out and cross today. So just watch for 'em, 'cause they're not always watching for you. Public forum, there's no cards, no public hearing. Committee report. Planning Commission. Oscar Meadows', second preliminary plat.
Oscar Meadows'.
I'm ready to grow, sorry.
All right, so up here on the screen for everyone to see is the exhibit for the preliminary plat of Oscar Meadows', second. The council will recall the approval of the first phase of the Oscar Meadows' subdivision. And so this here tonight is the preliminary version of the second phase. So this would add in approximately forty-one additional lots to that north side of the subdivision. And you can see where the proposed street access connections are. We've got Eleventh Avenue Northwest on this side, and then the future Sixteenth Street Northwest, or yes, Northwest on the north side. And let's see. There were several items that were needed to be submitted by the applicant in order to fully bring this to the final approval first. And so there are several conditions of approval having to go with this one. And I'll just read those out here. So there's four of them in total. And the first one is pretty standard. It's just that the development fees get paid to the city prior to the final plat's recording. And then the second one, which is similar to the first phase condition, having to do with the proposed trail corridor on the west side, and how the developer is agreeing to dedicate a trail for public use, and how the city would be considering that comparable in value, and therefore not charging the parkland dedication amount that would normally be charged. And then two more conditions here. One is the submittal of a geotechnical report drainage calculations, and then construction plans for Sixteenth Street Northwest, so that the city engineer can review those. And then finally is having to do with just updating the plat according to comments. One thing that we specifically talked about at the planning commission meeting on Monday was the size of the lots in Block Five, which is the center of the subdivision here. A few of them are just too small according to the code's requirements. But Mr. Bigelow was at the meeting, and he understands that the sizes will need to be adjusted in order to accommodate the code's requirements. So at the end of all of that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this preliminary subdivision. If there's any questions from the council?
All right. Thank you, Ian. If there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Oscar Meadows', second.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Paul. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Next one is your Creekside Grove Outlet B minor subdivision.
All right, so for this one, I'll just show on the GIS, just to give a background of all of this. So this is the Creekside Grove subdivision approved by the previous council last year. So basically, it just split the large, this very large parcel owned by Schuetti Enterprises into an east and a west half. And now this minor subdivision, for your consideration this evening, splits the west, or sorry, the east portion, which is Outlet B, into a north portion and a south portion, basically split along this natural drainage way that you can see here in the GIS. Let's see. So this here, these are the certificates of survey that were submitted with the application. This one here shows the entire Outlet B, and then this one here shows just the portion on the south edge. There was some discussion about how they, that each of the splits are labeled on the exhibits, but I did reach out to the Dodge County Land Records office, and they confirmed that this is appropriate. They just had a couple of small adjustments having to do with increasing the size where I've labeled it Exhibit A and B. So nothing, nothing major there. Couple of conditions of approval with this one, just having to do with making sure that the assessments that are paid in full prior to the recording of the minor subdivision as is required by our city code. And then number two was just that any revisions that might need to be made are done prior to recording.
Need to be paid in full, or does that just trigger the assessments to start?
Uh, it says paid in full.
Okay. The council will recall, this was one of the conditions that went forward with the discussion we had last year on the subdivision to the west. The idea that we would have an east-west corridor through the course of this, the, you know, the... Buy that eastern piece as well to be able to extend the road, because the current owner was... That's really the catalyst for this installation. Anybody got any other, any questions for Ian or Tim on that?
Yeah. This ensures that the Sixteenth Street connection goes through before...
It wouldn't be Sixteenth, it'd be Thirteenth, I think?
Thirteenth, sorry.
Yeah, it would allow for that east-west corridor to have a secondary access, so that people would go, be routed onto Fifty-Seven instead of going through the neighborhoods. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or... With that, I guess I would take a motion to approve the resolution for a minor subdivision of Creekside Grove Outlet B.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Paul. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Next will be your Reagan Edition final plat.
All right, let's see here. So up on your screen is the final plat of the Reagan Edition. Again, the preliminary version recommended for approval by the previous planning commission and the city council. Let's see. There's a few things that are notable that I would like to discuss about this one, because there was a lot of discussion during the preliminary approval of this. First of all, having to do with the number of housing units per the gross acreage. And specifically for that, this one has twelve lots for a single-family and fourteen lots for townhomes, coming out to a total of a hundred and sixteen housing units over the twenty-nine point one-four acres. So calculating the density for that comes out to three point nine-eight, which therefore it does meet the density requirements for the low-density residential as is defined in our comprehensive plan. Let's see, what else? There are no private streets for this one, so that was another talking point. These are all going to be public streets, so they'll be built up to the city standards. Let's see. And then another point has to do with billing permits. In the development agreement, the draft is included in your packets tonight. It has a specific provision in it that doesn't allow for any billing permits in Phase Two to be issued until the Thirteenth Street Northwest connection is made out to Highway Fifty-Seven. So I have a different exhibit here. It's in the final PUD exhibit. There's a dashed line, kind of separates the halves into Phase One and Phase Two, just so you get an idea of that. Let's see here. So a few conditions of approval with this one. Let's see. Pretty similar to all of our final plat conditions, just payment of the development-related fees. And then with the draft development agreement, there's a couple of things that will have to be filled in, but the draft has them highlighted, so staff will have the ability to finalize that and get that recorded with the final plat. And then construction plans will have to be updated to meet the city engineer's review comments as well. Is there any questions from the council?
I have one. Thirteenth Street Northwest, is that gonna go all the way to Fifty-Seven, or is there gonna be a connecting street to take it back up to Sixteenth? 'Cause at one time, MINDOT wasn't sure, and we weren't sure. But is that, is that one that goes all the way through?
Yeah, I can maybe answer that. I think, starting big picture and I'll work my way down to what may or may not happen.
Yes, thank you.
So council condition of approval, this subdivision here, this final plat, Phase Two can't go until there was a secondary connection of Thirteenth Street either out to Sixteenth Street or out to Highway Fifty-Seven. So our understanding is that's why we're splitting that off into a minor subdivision, so the developer of this Reagan Edition can control his own destiny of being able to build that roadway. So that's why he's purchased the southern part of the east half for Mr. Schuetti, so he can control his own destiny. So therefore, it's likely that it'll come out to Fifty-Seven, and it also could come up to Sixteenth Street. And if you remember, MINDOT did say that they would allow us to come out to Thirteenth Street, as long as we continue to work with them on providing for the turn lanes that were needed for Thirteenth Street. So that's our LPP, our, excuse me, yeah, our LPP project was to bid, build, excuse me, Fifty-Seven from the roundabout to where we ended on Twelfth Street. So we were attempting to get a funding from MINDOT to complete those upgrades for Thirteenth Street to allow that connection. So seeing as he bought the south half, I highly suspect that that'll probably happen before the north half. That'll probably, again, connect up to Fifty or Sixteenth Street, so it'll be connected in two spots, is what I suspect will happen, so.
What I can't remember, but I just wanted to verify, so.
Can he sell that property from, that will have the road after he finishes Phase One?
He could. He could choose to build Thirteenth Street due east. He just would have to have other planning and zoning entitlements to get the east half completed. But he understands where the council is at unconditional approval. We're, you know, holding up his completion of Phase Two until he gets it figured out. So that not controlling your own destiny as a developer is not a comfortable spot for them, so he figured it out and bought the south half, and says he'll stub Thirteenth Street out to Fifty-Seven, and he has the ability to do that. So makes him feel better and gets the job done, and we're all happy, right? Heard from the citizens somewhere here tonight that they wanted that second access. It was critical. The council drew the line in the sand, and here we are getting what the citizens wanted. So it's, I feel it's a good project, so.
So one of the conditions of approval was that they addressed the comments of the city engineer. Did you have any comments on what we're seeing here that they need to address?
Yes, I had some comments. It's all, I'll call it cleanup of the construction plan set. I don't have any, you know, grave comments that we can't work through and just clean the construction plan up. So it's just tweak services here, tweak grading here, nothing major that, why I would say would be a council-level discussion or decision. So I'm comfortable with it at the end of the day. They got an Outlet A there, that's gonna be a big stormwater pond, the hydraulics work, grading is gonna work, it's just tweaking some things, so nothing's that's gonna change this final plat significantly, so. I guess if you really wanna know of any details on the final plat, if Outlet A is gonna be conveyed to the city, a lot of those easements will go away. We don't need a pedestrian easement on our Outlet A. And the same thing with the other utilities on the east half of the project. So just minor stuff like that, and then just minor construction plans, that's stuff that you guys typically don't, don't see anyway, so no concerns on my end.
Okay, thank you.
The streets are going to be built to the width and the standards that we have for the rest of the city. There's no sheaping out on the streets?
Correct.
Right, yes.
And sidewalks will be there as well?
Correct. It'll be, this will be city streets going all around, I'll call it the horseshoe that was proposed as private. I believe that was a condition of approval you guys had, so developers essentially meeting all the conditions that we drew the line in the sand and condition approved the preliminary plat, so we're meeting the, meeting the conditions. And he's doing the other kind of side deal to control his own destiny on getting Thirteenth Street stubbed out to Fifty-Seven, or Sixteenth Street if it's built to the north, which is what the condition...
Sorry. How many fewer residences are in this to reach the three point nine?
Uh, well, it's a hundred and sixteen housing units. The first version was a hundred and twenty-one, I believe, so it does meet that threshold.
Is there still a buffer between Stone Ridge and the houses on the view?
Yeah, so the bottom row here, we'll call it, these are all single-family home lots.
Yep.
And then the townhomes are above that.
I couldn't remember, was he going to do a fence or foliage or just...
I think they are doing, they're planning a retaining wall between the lots there, so that is one note, that the electric department currently has an overhead line that runs east-west along where that would be along the property line, so they are looking at undergrounding that here as part of the feeder, the new feeder's gonna run along the north-south from Excel up by where the dump road and that little gravel road onto the reuse center runs. It's gonna run down, and then they're gonna do underground all of that stuff along the back, because obviously with the retaining wall in between, it's gonna be difficult for them to transverse that, you know, with the, with the vehicle, so.
And there's still, there's still follow files within their TIF as well? But it still follows the same...
Yeah, no, there's no, there wouldn't be any changes to that, so there'd be a few less units, so the aggregate amounts will be slightly different with the capture of the valuation, but... Any other questions? I would look for a motion to the, approve the final PUD of the Reagan Edition.
Wait, are we doing the plat or the PUD?
I'm on the wrong one.
Plat first, I think?
Plat first. I was on the wrong page. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul. We have a motion to approve the final plat of the Reagan Edition. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Next is the Reagan Edition final PUD. PUD. I'm having a tough time tonight.
All right, so with the final PUD here, I've got the exhibits that they included with the submittal. So just a few things to comment on this one. The approval of the final PUD does constitute a rezoning of the entire property. It's DH Development Holding right now, so a rezoning is required for any development to happen. But essentially, the townhome lots are all going to have a base zoning district of the R-three multifamily residential, and all the single-family homes will have the R-one single-family residential zoning. But then the PUD adds an overlay over the entire, entire piece, which is described in the exhibits here. So this first one here is the general over, sorry, the overall PUD plan, so it shows the general layout of everything. You'll notice the trails and their locations to provide connectivity to the subdivision. This one here has the lots and setbacks, so you can see what the dimensions are going to be and what the setback requirements are going to be for each of the lots. This one here is the landscaping plan, so you'll can see that there is going to be trees lining the streets, and kind of on this other side here, let's see, and then the townhomes are all going to have base plantings as well. That's this exhibit here. And let's see, this just talks about the use of the community room and the trails as well. So altogether, this forms the final PUD that's up for consideration this evening. If there's any questions from the council, let's see.
That, your red dotted line up there, that's, that's the split from Phase One and Phase Two, so the west side would be Phase One to the left as well as that?
Right, yeah, the west, west side is Phase One, east side is Phase Two.
I ask a question.
Sure.
When you have the red line through the drawings, are they just gonna stop the housing right there, only build part of it? 'Cause that's why you have to...
Well, it's, it's going through the middle of a townhome. I was gonna ask that. I would assume, but I don't know what the builder's plan is, that he would have to maybe build the, a two-plex there and then add a four-plex, or not build it at all until Phase Two. We'd have to ask him on that, but it does go right through the middle of the four-plex.
Do you mind, Mayor?
Go ahead.
The, the phasing plan they show on the final plans here actually includes Fifth Avenue, which is the road farther to the east that's stubbing to the south, includes construction out, so the secondary access coming out, and then the townhome just north of that where it says Thirteenth Street there includes that, and then it kind of cuts back to where that drainageway's in there. So I suspect he's gonna create that second outlet and tweak that phasing slightly, so go from Fifth Street to account for the townhome just north of there, go, we tie in the house homes to the west, and then go due north where like the storm sewer and that kind of gray line is. So I think that, I think that's been updated since then.
Yeah, this exhibit is... So it goes up Fifth, it will go around the sixth building to accommodate the sixth building?
Up here?
Yep.
Come back and show you guys, and then come here.
Okay. So it will include all the ones that are cut in half or thirds?
So come up here, so this road will all be built, these townhomes will be built, come here, and then up there. That's what they show on the final plan, so.
And so he has to, in essence, these had to be built before he starts Phase, before even processed the idea of starting Phase Two, and has the road done, correct?
Fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the council's condition of approval of the preliminary plat would still stand, and I think it may have been to get a building permit in Phase Two, the secondary access to the east had to be construction and functionable.
How, how do you determine which ones in Phase One are the income-based versus the non-income-based housing?
I think that'll be up to the...
That's up to the developer?
That's up to the developer. We do track that, so he's often submit a report each year...
Yeah.
...indicating, you know, units that he has that are income-based.
Yeah.
As part of the project, and that's one of the requirements for the tax increment financing would be that, that percentage has to be met. So they'll also have to submit a yearly report that we'll, we'll certainly share with the council.
So that me, I'm sorry, so that means that if Phase One's the only one completed, he still has to meet that percentage requirement in only the Phase One buildings? It's not, he doesn't have to meet the requirement, he has to meet the requirement...
For what's built?
For what's built, not when the project's completed.
Yeah, I mean, for the, for the TIF to be fully utilized, he would have to meet the requirement for the whole subdivision. If for some reason, you know, that wasn't the case, then he would still have to meet the requirement for what is built.
Right, so...
So either way, he's gonna have to meet the requirement.
I'm just imagining, you know, Phase One gets done in year one, and Phase Two might be three years later, that Phase One will still have to meet it even though Phase Two's not done?
That's correct.
Okay.
One more thing, though. Then why not just make him take Thirteenth all the way out to Fifty-Seven, then in Phase One before, as, as it's finished, Thirteenth has to connect automatically to Fifty-Seven?
'Cause otherwise, you can get three-quarters of it done and quit, and there's no outlet.
Well, the requirement was that, you know, Phase Two, he has to complete it by Phase Two, that was the requirement laid out for him, so.
Speaking from that, Mayor, or?
If you like, yeah.
Okay, so, you know, we had a preliminary plat, we had the discussion. I was prepared as a city engineer to say completion, the secondary outlet from a street use perspective was not even exceeding some of our other busier streets in town. I understand your guys' perspective of busy going to the south, but it wasn't any busier than like Fifth going by the school, Seventh south of the fairgrounds, Fifth that some staff live on, east-west. Really, from a traffic perspective, it didn't really even warrant a secondary access going to the east, but the city council still made the decision to have the second phase as a conditional approval, and that's the council's prerogative. So in my opinion, Mayor, that that decision was a discussion that happened at the preliminary plat, decisions were made, the council had the conditional approval, so that's where we're at from, you know, my perspective as a city engineer, but obviously, you as a council could make other decisions, so.
Does council have any other questions for staff? Okay. No other questions, I would look for approval of the resolution for the final PUD of the Reagan Edition.
I'll make the motion to approve the PUD.
Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second? I will second that, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you. Motion carries. Old Business. Under Old Business, we got, we're bringing back the Merck franchise agreement feedback? Yeah, well, so I'm looking for any feedback you had after further review. I did talk with, with the folks over at the Natural Gas Company, and they are flexible with the length, and one of the issues was the length of the agreement, I think maybe you brought that up to answer. So they are flexible with that. They said that, you know, they have, a lot of their contracts are twenty-five years, that's been somewhat... They have some that are twenty, some that are fifteen, and some that are ten. So if you wanted to go with the shorter term, if that was something the council wanted to do, they're open to that change, to that agreement, and that'd be something they would work with on, us on rewriting that. Other than that, I mean, I'm just, like I said, looking for feedback from council if there's anything else you had questions. And that was the biggest one, I think, that came out of our... Well, and if we, we don't have to change it if there was a certain language in it that said timeframe to get out, I mean, notice. I mean, that was the only reason I brought it up, I just wanted to... I think it'd be cleaner if we just set a shorter timeframe, to be honest with you. Okay. I'm fine with that. You know, and then the council in the future could say, yep, we wanna do it again another ten years, or we wanna do it twenty, or whatever they decide to do, they... We aren't hamstringing them in that, in that way. I mean, if, if the Natural Gas Company's willing to do that, and they said they were, so I don't see why we wouldn't make it a shorter timeframe. It's not gonna hurt us. All it requires, so based on your feedback, you know, if you have other changes you'd like to see, you know, we can talk to them, I'll talk to them about that. Otherwise, we'll schedule a public hearing for an updated ordinance for the franchise agreement. If the course of term wouldn't expire. Okay. Yeah, I'm in favor of making it a shorter term, I just don't know, you know, what's a good term. I would think, you know, do you go ten years? That gives people a chance to look at it again. You know, I'm just afraid twenty-five years is so far out that none of us even knew it was a twenty-five year, so it would be... And then it doesn't seem like it changes much, I mean... You know, it's, they, they said ten years was acceptable, so I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem with that myself. It's not a lot of, you know, for us, it's, it's a matter of just changing the forms and updating them a little bit, so if that's what you want to do with, that's what I can bring back to them.
I think ten years is a good amount of time. That allows some things to change, and we can be a little bit more adaptable if, for some reason we need to be.
Well, and I'm, that's absolutely right, you know, realistically, the, this originally started with People's Natural Gas that was bought by WEC, you know, which is Wisconsin Energy, which owns Minnesota Energy, part, part of it. You know, it's possible ten years from now, they'll have a new owner and, and things would be a different situation. So I mean, I think, I think that's... Then we're not tied in as long, yeah. Absolutely. Okay. So I'll bring that back as ten years, let them know that we'll have a scheduled public hearing for that ordinance.
I have a couple of things.
Sure, if you've got, go ahead.
The city can't charge franchise fees unless we've got the right to do that in the ordinance. That might be something else that we should add in there. It doesn't mean that the city has to start charging franchise fees right away, but it would preserve the city's right to do that moving forward before ten years where...
Sure.
So I, that would be one. And then there were a couple of provisions about just insurance that is in the league's proposed ordinance, franchise ordinance, that wouldn't, I can send you specific language that if you...
That'd be great.
If you would like, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That I would suggest.
Sounds good to me.
Can I just try to summarize what I think I heard? You're saying that we should put a clause in our agreement to say that we have the authority to charge a franchise fee, but we are not necessarily gonna actually charge them?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, like I said, the only way that, if a future council or if you decided that you wanted to start charging a franchise fee, the only way that you have the ability to do that is if it's in the ordinance. So that's what you're looking at adopting would be a new ordinance.
We could email that over to the city, that'd be awesome.
Can I assume that franchise fees are not that uncommon?
These are very common.
So, the fact that we don't is a little bit of, is, is good for them?
You know what, we do have a franchise fee with a natural gas.
Oh, we do?
So, yeah, I mean, I think to Melanie's point, it would clarify, it would strengthen that if we wanted to change that at some point in the future, so.
Okay.
The council enacted that franchise fee as part of the fire hall construction back in twenty-twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was part of the funding apparatus for the, uh, the bond issuance and covered some of that cost.
Okay.
Will you bring that back?
Absolutely.
Perfect. And then we'll go over it one more time before you set up public hearing.
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you. Um, up next is council code of conduct. And I will start with that being I asked for, uh, Tim to find that. I'd been asked by a couple people, we had one and I was certain we did, but I couldn't remember. So, I wanted Tim to look it up and I was even at training was asked about it. So, I just, it was good to bring it back and just look it over and if there's, you know, see what people think of it. And I think it's something we should look at every year just to remind people and then, so that everybody knows we have it. We have it for our employees and, uh, and we have it for ourselves, let's just make sure everybody knows we're having it.
That's, you know, I, I, it's in the packet and, uh, there's also the, uh, the agenda request form in there. So, and I've already received one of those, so I appreciate that. That gives us a little bit more a heads up when we're trying to get items in the packet. But, um, other than that, I don't think there's any issues that I've seen from council and, you know, that would, you know, be a problem with what's, was approved back in, I think it was twenty-fifteen. But, uh, you know, that's just for, for your reference, that Dan had asked us to put it in there, so.
We might have to add something about Mel's cough.
She's in her second month?
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna need a window or something.
Careful what you ask for. All right, so, yeah, I just wanted that out there, it's more of an FYI, to let the public know yes, we do have it, you know, and for us to know that, it's there and what to expect, you know, so. Thank you for looking that up, Tim?
You betcha.
All right. Um, next would be New Business and it would be for the police chief to talk to us about the body worn camera policy, BWC.
So, there's a copy of the policy, uh, in your, in your council packet? Is there any questions you guys have about it? I know it's quite lengthy. It's, uh, based upon the league policy along with some similar language that's in our in-car camera policy.
So, uh, so like your in-camera, those, in the squad, those are on every time, uh, they turn on every time you turn the lights on, right?
Correct, so they, they automatically power on when the car is started and then they're programmed when the lights turn on that they can, that they automatically record. They're al, they're always recording, actually. We can go app, back and record after the fact too. And the body cameras, most of them are the same way, that they're, they're, it's a hard drive that's continually recording, but it doesn't save it permanently until you hit that record button.
Okay.
Could you just give a quick summary of kind of what this means, like what you guys will be doing and what might be different? Cause I don't, I don't understand procedure, can you just, you guys are gonna, are gonna start wearing body cams at all times and sometimes you're gonna use them and sometimes you won't, or how does that work?
We'll wear them all the time.
Uh-huh.
But they're not on all the time, right? I mean
They're not on recording all the time. So, you hit record, usually they're set up to go back one minute when you start an incident. So, anything that's gonna be controversial is usually when you would activate it. Um, in this policy, they have the option to record, uh, general citizen contacts, so if one of you comes up, sir, talks, talking to me, if I wanted to record it, I could. If I don't wanna record, I don't have to, according to this policy.
Okay, so each officer is gonna have to make the decision when he's responding to something whether or not to push a button to record?
So, they'll also be programmed too with the cars. So, we, whoever we choose for a vendor, we wanna choose the same vendor that we have in our cars, so that way they're programmed, like when the lights come on, it's gonna activate your body camera and, and the in-car camera.
Okay.
We're still researching which vendor we wanna go with, they're both competing. Um, right now, we use Motorola for our in-car cameras. Um, Axon, if we went to an Axon, we'd have to get new in-car cameras too. But our current in-car cameras are starting to get old and they're gonna have to get replaced soon. And both of them have, uh, programs where you can pay over five or ten years and there's, uh, you get like squad cameras you get after five years, body cameras after three years and get five years. And they hope it's kinda like a, uh, self-loan plan that you keep on renewing it.
Okay.
Do you, uh, what does the county use, I mean, for theirs?
They're using Motorola.
So, would we wanna go with the same as them or are they gonna change too? You know, I, cause then you could interface when you're both onsite is what I'm looking at.
So, right now, we both use Motorola in-car cameras, they went with Motorola, which was originally WatchGuard was the company that got bought out by Motorola. Um, and they've been buy, a lot of the agencies have been switching from Motorola over to Axon and they've actually been buying up a lot of these old Motorola cameras. So, they're sitting on a bunch of old cameras. Um, I'm looking to go with a program that's, uh, just, just a fee-based, so you don't actually own the cameras, it's body cameras as a service. And so, you're buying the software. The software is where the, the companies make money in the end, so they wanna get you in their ecosystem. So, you, you buy, buy cameras as a service and five or ten-year contract and you get refreshes. The new records management system right now, um, with Motorola, as part of that records management system, there's auto tagging where it can look at the time and stuff and like you can go back and find the videos a little bit easier. That's something that we'd have to pay a little extra fee with to get, uh, Axon to do that with the records management system.
What kind of costs are you looking for? This'll be additional costs in the, the fall budget?
About ten to fifteen thousand dollars per year for body cameras and then to switch over the, uh, in-car cameras would be about ten thousand dollars too, but that's something we're gonna have to pay for.
Per vehicle or all total?
All total, probably about twenty thousand to do both. And I, and I, the longer I wait with somebody's salespeople, the better deals they give me. So, I just, they just, Axon recently just offered to lower their, uh, initial bid by forty-four thousand dollars, that was over five years.
What's the, uh, what's the data storage costs we'll be looking at? Cause that's another cost too.
So, that's all built into this plan that I'm looking to do. So, that way you're just paying, you, you, it's predictable, over five years, you know what you're gonna have to pay versus if you just bought the cameras separate, you, you don't know how much they do you're gonna retain and how much you're gonna have to pay. The plans I'm looking at, you just, you pay the ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars per year, that includes the cameras and the, the software. Then they're gonna try to sell us other software in the future as far as that AI keeps on improving, so they're trying to sell us AI software, uh, licensed plate reading software. Um, so, every year they'll, they'll approach me trying to sell me a new software or the, the add-on, it's already built in, you just gotta pay for that service.
Uh, does the, I didn't see in here anything, but I tried to just do a search on the find on there. Is there anything on the SRO, do they have to wear one at school?
Yes, I'll have to wear one.
Okay, um, does the school, is the school then given access to all those videos or do they have to quest them, just like a normal sit, like how would that? Because they're in the school all day long, there's data privacy issues there, how is that gonna work?
So, all the data is considered, it's classified private data under state law.
Yeah.
That's in the policy. So, the people that are in the video have access to it.
Okay. We've just had some people requesting a lot of data lately, so I wanna make sure that this is protected data.
And most stuff would be just general citizen contacts where the SRO, so he's not gonna hit record.
I just changed in here, I don't know exactly where I am, cause it's quite a long policy.
Mm-hmm.
In addition, officers shall flag each file
Thank you.
Sorry, I just don't wanna cough into the microphone.
I know, but
In addition, officers shall flag each file as appropriate to indicate that it contains information about data subjects who may have rights under MGDPA limiting disclosure. These individuals include, and then you get down to, uh, fourteen other individuals whose identities the officer believes may be legally protected from public disclosure. So, that to me would cover students if
I'm just, that, that language is already in our in-car camera policy too, cause that's required by state law. And it's usually like undercover officers, uh, child protection reports, stuff like that.
I'm, I'm asking, cause I know there's cameras in our buildings and if someone were to, if our SRO were to interact with them and have to do something, can the school ask for that as a way to handle the concern they have? Much like they would watch a video of someone breaking into a locker, if the SRO talks with them, would they be able to use that as well?
The school would not have access to that.
Okay, even though, even though the SRO is paid by a portion of their contracts paid by the school, that's completely separate?
So, if there was a criminal element, we'd be able to investigate that using our body camera footage?
Yeah, yeah. I just don't wanna have them constantly asking for videos, kinda where I'm at.
And that's why it's classified as private data.
Okay.
So, the, the only subjects that primarily get it are the ones that are in it, unless there's a use of force incident and it's to, to let the public know what happened, then we can release the, the video.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna note, I have a longstanding reservation about body worn cameras, I communicated that with council before, but brought this to you today because, uh, I know the police chief's interested in, in implementing those in this fall's, in this fall's budget cycle, so, um, certainly, you know, whatever questions you have for him, I'm sure he's glad to take those.
Do the benefit, is it more, do the benefits outweigh the negatives of it?
Yes, cause we're always, it, it's, you can't catch, capture everything, but our goal is to be transparent and catch, capture as much data for prosecution and officer transparency.
And you already, and you said you already have cameras in the cars?
Correct.
And so, what percent of the, what percent of interaction are you already catching with just those?
Which, we can get audio sometimes if we're within range, but most of the time, once we go into a house, almost every domestic, we don't get video of.
Okay.
So, that's an important thing for domestics to, um, when you show a jury, you know, what the scene was like, like the, like the, the fear that the victim was in. A lot of times when you go to court, the victim might be persuaded not to testify, but we have that video of what kind of fear they're in, that's actually gonna help with the prosecution's side.
So, this would have to go on this year's budget?
It would. Well, not, it would be the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Obviously, we'll have to check with the county and make sure that there aren't any surprises this year regarding the budgetary restraints, but I think we would implement these costs going forward in twenty-six, is that what you're looking at kinda Josh?
I would like to try to get them started this year and these companies would be willing probably to, for voting cost till twenty-twenty-six.
I mean, if, if, uh, if we need to, I mean, that's one of the reasons we have some budget reserves and I know some folks have noted last year, we, police budget had some additional funds that weren't spent because of staffing and variety of things, so, I mean, we could start it this year and, and then it wouldn't have all that fall on next year's budget too, which, to be honest with you, I'd be glad to not, you know, it's always easier to predict this year than it is with possible budget shortfalls of the state, LGA cuts, things like that, might be, might be prudent.
Um, but I'd like to see more of the numbers instead of, you know, you're saying it's about ten thousand, I'd like to, you know, like to see
Yeah, and I, I, I think Tim might have those, but I do have some information, I didn't wanna overdo it tonight, so
No, I mean, I would like to look at that, I mean, we got time, obviously, but
Yep, and I, I, and just off the top of my head, it was about ten to fifteen thousand dollars per year and I, like I said, the longer I wait, the salespeople give me better deals.
Yeah. As, as, uh, Tim likes to agree with me, I like more information sometimes than not and it's easier if I can see it than it's about, you know, and
Yep.
I'll forward out all the information I have to the council, to the EBT. I, I think the, the policy was the biggest consideration and I, you know, I, Josh was still not hundred percent sure which one would be the best choice in terms of vendor.
Yeah, just the vendor last week was, was when he came in, offered a better deal.
And, um, as back to the policy, you said, I think you said this is basically the same as your in-car camera policy?
A lot of the language is.
So, in terms of your functionality, it's not really gonna change much, you're just gonna have another camera that you're gonna have to potentially have to document recordings of, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's where it'd be nice when they'll talk to each other, camera to camera, you know, so
So, yeah, whoever we choose as a vendor, we want it to be the same company that we have in our cars.
Yeah.
All right.
And Mayor, another cost is, uh, uh, audit that we gotta do every two years and that's another two to three thousand dollars, so, I, I can get estimates on that too.
Okay.
Any concerns about this project from, uh, from staff, from your police staff?
Do officers want body cameras?
There's no concerns, they all want it, okay.
Do, do you have a, does the, I mean, it doesn't, I guess it doesn't matter, but does the county have a similar policy? I mean, or is ours, are you making up a new one or are you kinda guideline enough of those, so, you know, so there's no surprises for you or us later?
It's based, the league of Minnesota City's policy.
Okay.
Based on their amount of policy and our in-car cameras based on their amount of policy, so that's why, easier to use the same language.
Yeah.
And all the sheriffs in the, uh, state of Minnesota to use, uh, Lexapro to develop their policies, so.
Okay. I'm good, um
Do we need an action on this tonight?
No, we don't need an action on it tonight, I think, uh, I did forward out the quotes for everyone, so you can check those out and, you know, when Josh gets a little closer, maybe to finalizing those and we'll approve quotes and maybe the policy at the same time, if that's okay?
Well, I'll have to have a public hearing on it too.
Okay.
And that's here.
Yeah.
All right.
So, but no changes that you wanna see in the policy?
Well, if you do, email me or let Josh know and then we can take a look at those, so. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
All right, up next is administrator's report.
All right. I've got a few things just to highlight, uh, legislature is grinding forward, you know, they're, they're now tied officially in the House, so, um, we're talking about a, uh, redistricting commission, Minnesota's had a longstanding practice where the, the courts have drawn the maps the last forty years or so, because the legislature hasn't been able to, uh, accomplish that, so, a couple different options that they're looking at. I still don't remain convinced that anything's gonna happen at the legislative level this year, I, it just doesn't seem likely with the number of, of tie votes they've had. EDA, we had a really good, uh, meeting last week with REV, the, the folks from REV and from, uh, Region Nine came and was about two hours long, it was a good, um, long meeting and really fleshed that out. I know Ian has, uh, got some special events planning, I included a flyer for, for one of those here, um, coming up on the seventeenth in Cassin here in April. Um, really appreciate all the volunteer time that goes into that, really for all of our committees, but I know that was a long meeting and, and Ian made lunch for us, so I mean, that was a plus.
He did, he did a good job.
Ian hit it pretty hard.
Except for he forgot the butter.
Anyway, he's good for your cholesterol, Dan. Anyway, um, no, so it's, it's really a good thing and today at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, we talked about that a little bit more, the chamber is really interested, a lot of the businesses in town are, are interested in the different trainings that are coming in the different trainings that are coming out, so that's great. Body worn cameras, we went through that. The big one is the budget for the state of Minnesota. So for the 20, you know, for the next biennium, they have a small surplus, which is probably going to be zero by the time they're done because they're going to start cutting this biennium because they've got the $6 billion deficit that's coming in the next biennium. So, which is about 10% of their budget, you know, $66 billion budget, about 10% short in their next projection. So we, I mean, and there isn't really, maybe that's the one place where there'll be some congruency between the parties. What they're going to cut, I don't know. They're going to disagree on what that gets, what gets cut. The House will pass one bill, the Senate will pass a different one, they'll have to go to conference committee and hammer out the budget. But I'm expecting, you know, local government aid to be under the microscope. Schools, there's a lot of money that's flown to them the last couple of years, so there's going to be some checks on that. One thing I noted in here is that originally, anyone who had a cannabis location in their community was going to be getting part of that sales tax. Well, Governor Walz has indicated that the state's can keep all that now, so, which makes sense when they have these, these shortfall. So, anyway, I'll be watching it, we'll see what happens. I'm not concerned for this year's LGA, but it certainly would be flat, I expect, in 26. I don't expect to see any increases. And then the 27, 28 biennium is where we'll probably see some cuts because that's where they're going to have the largest part of the cuts they'll have to be in that cycle. And hopefully, the budget forecast will improve. You know, we had a whipsaw back in, as council members who were on board at the time will remember, went from a big deficit, and then there was a big injection of ARPA funding and federal funding and higher spending by residents and higher sales tax receipts. And so went to a big 18 billion surplus, which then got spent pretty quickly. So anyway, council quote contact, it's in there. One thing that I included in the packet, this is something we budgeted for last year, was ClearGov. We'd like to start implementing that program. And, I don't know, Ian, maybe, no, I didn't, I put it in there, the city of Wasika is one of the ones that's closest to us that uses it. If you click on that link, you can see theirs. And I also included the information in your package, just about the product we're looking at. We're looking at this budget book. We want to provide transparency for the public as well. I mean, I know that Josh just talked about that. But on the budget side, I have a good knowledge of it, the council follows it pretty well, but people in the public don't necessarily always have that level of experience with it. And so we want to provide that, those options for them. I also included in Dropbox the copy of Prior Lakes, which is extremely long. So I don't know that ours will be quite that extensive, but that is their digital budget book in PDF form. So in essence, what ClearGov will do is they'll create a website, and all of our budget information will be available, and it'll be really good with lots of options for charts and graphs. People can see where the money's going and where it's coming from and everything like that. And we see it each year when we get our audit. The council reviews that, and we'll be reviewing that in May. But for the members of the public, I think this will be a real plus. There are a lot of cities in our area that utilize it. So we're planning on starting that programming here. Sarah took off today, but I think we're planning on starting that implementation in early April, so it'll be ready for our budget cycle in, you know, July, August timeframe, so we'll have that go live. So anyway, just letting you know, that's planned, it's in budget. It'll actually be below budgeted number this year because we're, we're just going to utilize that digital budget book. We're not going to do all the different components that they have. We want to see how it works. I know Linda talked with them too about their different modules they have, which, you know, there's a personnel module, there's different things that, if it's something that we feel like is useful, we can increase or we can just maintain that digital budget book. Another item I wanted to just let people know, and we put this out, is the city website does have this e-notify service. So recently, we had a snowfall, and we had some plowing going on, and we were able to put that out to everyone. So if you go to that e-notify, there are three different things you could sign up for. One of them is just our, our notice that we put out regularly, which would be like, for example, snow plowing events, things like that. There are a couple of other ones, like you can get updates on EDA stuff and other agendas and things like that too. But, so we encourage anyone to sign up for that who's interested. They'll get, they can choose up a text option or an email or both, and then they'll get sent to them whenever we have anything that we put out as a special announcement.
Is that something we can send out in the newsletter and put out on the city's Facebook and website?
We have put it out, but I mean, we'll continue to put it out, trying to get more people to sign up. We certainly can add it to the utility bills. Remind me, Linda, before I forget that, to talk to Jessica about that, making sure we get that added, and we can do it.
And then maybe show them some of the things.
Sure.
That they can sign up, so they don't have to go to it.
Actually, Ian, could you bring up the city website quick? Maybe we can just take a look at it right now.
The more information they got, the easier it is.
Well, I mean, you know, we have this and we're paying for it. I want to make sure people can hear about it. Click on that under, right now, the notice is the mowing bid, so click on that, click here. I just signed up for it, sorry.
Nope, nope, nope.
No, okay, well, I know you can look at it, e-notify there. Where's that?
Go, get out of that, make that black box go away.
Okay.
And then scroll down, and then go to the right. There you go.
Okay, there, sure, it's on our front page or website, so yeah, there we go.
But if we can.
Yeah, and then if you scroll down, you can see all the different things you can get notices on, agendas, minutes, aquatic center forums, and then just the announcements that we send out, like alerts, which would be like a snow plowing event or something like that. So it really is pretty straightforward, and I'm hoping to increase the number of people who are using this because I think it'll just be better to communicate with the public.
Oh, I really like that.
So anyways, I think those are the items I have. Let me see what else I've got in here. I did want to just note, you know, at our work session, we had talked about other options for different things. So the city of Rochester recently, they're utilizing one of these special districts. It's a sidewalk improvement district, so I included that information. One of our employees received this in the mail. So what it is, is they're basically creating an overlay over the whole city of Rochester, and they're going to be assessing everyone in the whole community for sidewalk projects. So at this time, the street component of this isn't fully fleshed out, the legislature, but they are using it for sidewalks, and some of the metro cities are using it for other things like special downtown, snow clearing and things like that in Minneapolis and something like Eagan and stuff like that. So this may be an option in the future, if that street aspect of it gets fleshed out. The requirement is that you have to have this draft map, and you have to show your plan. And then, I think, what was the total amount they were going to be assessing? I don't know, you know, you can look it up, but it looks like.
It varies different places.
Yeah, on page third, on the third or fourth page there, it's, you know, what they're going to be assessing per year would be residential without a budding pedestrian. For this, it'd be 3312, that's just the city of Rochester. And it breaks out kind of how the fees, and all of that will change over time as Rochester changes it. But certainly could be something that could be looked at if, if we're able to utilize that as an alternative to funding some of their options. So I also included just the rules that had been, had been created by the legislature originally. A lot of these haven't fully come to fruition legislatively speaking. So just want to highlight that because it does give us some options in the future possibly.
So a question though, the thing in here, the information brief, which is I-1, makes it sound like it has to be in a commercial or industrial area, that you can't use this for residential, but you're saying Rochester is.
Well, as I said, so for the, if you look at the, they're using it for the whole sidewalks in Rochester.
Right.
So the street component, you know, and like I said, legislatively, there's kind of these nebulous areas where they, they talk about creating this policy, but then it's implemented in different ways. Most of the cities that I'm familiar with, when they have special districts, it's for a downtown zone. A lot of it is snow plow or snow removal. So all the businesses in a certain area will have, you know, will agree to being assessed so that they don't have to do their own snow shoveling.
Okay.
And that's, that's the most common one that I'm familiar with. This one from Rochester was actually, was interesting because it came in the mail a couple of days after we discussed at the work session. And I just thought it was sort of interesting to see that they're implementing in a different way with the sidewalk program compared to what I've seen in the past.
Okay.
Also, no, I read into this some more, and the sidewalk improvement program has actually got its own separate authority through the state that's different than the one that's in here for the district. They're like, they carved out this thing specific for sidewalk improvements. And that's what Rochester's using. And then that League of Minnesota City's one that is included, is basically the same thing for streets, but it never got approved. And you see it says 2020 on there, and every year, it's, they have, but it's never gone through yet.
So it just keeps getting kicked down the road?
Keeps getting kicked down the road, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But it would give some options in the future if it, if it does get approved. And for sidewalks, you know, Rochester's going to do it. So I mean, that's, that's interesting by itself. So anyway, just include those, just because I know we had talked about that a little bit, and to sort of show you what some things that are possibilities in the future. I think that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Next will be our engineers' report.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just two quick items tonight. The first one being direction on the assessment policy for 2025 project cycle. At the next council meeting, we are going to have a special assessment hearing, and then we're going to be kicking off another project that was currently proposed to be special assessed. So I think at our council workshop, we talked about special assessments, and I think the conclusion from the council was bringing to the next meeting to kind of set what our plan of attack is for our next council meeting. So I don't know if you want more information than that, Mayor, I can, you know, give some more or I guess turn it over to you on how you guys want to talk about it because, you know, we have assessed in the past, it's kind of the road we were going down where there was some discussion on changing the policy.
I think, I mean, we had quite a lengthy discussion more or less on it. I think we can just bring it up now and talk about it, and if we have questions, we'll ask you.
So I, I just want to start, the public hearings for the Southwest Reconstruct, right, the next one?
Correct.
So in regards to that, I got a few numbers here, hard numbers from the documents that I've seen. The 30% assessment is at 803,400 dollars, which is 9,030 dollars per REU. That works out to 91 dollars a month. 16,400 dollars if the resident pays over the 15-year installment plan that they're defaulted into. Now personally, what I would like to see, and we've talked about this before, is trying to phase that down. So what I would like to see, and I don't know what the numbers are for the other projects, but for this project specifically, if we did a 25% assessment instead of a 30% assessment, I mean, we'd still be assessing 669,000 dollars. That's a difference of 133,900, about 135,000. That would lower the REUs per person from 9,000 dollars to 7,500, and 91 dollars a month to 76 dollars a month. And total over the span would go from 16,400 to 13,700. So almost 3,000 dollars savings over the entire 15 years installments. Now, as for paying for it, I would propose that we use some from the stabilization fund. 2024, our audit showed a balance of 1.74 million dollars in the stabilization fund. Obviously, some of that is being set aside for capital improvements. I don't know how much, because it's not broken down in the audit. And our budget from 2024 that we received on January 2nd, which obviously is being audited now, showed that we had a 1.76 million dollar surplus from last year. Most likely, there's things that hadn't been entered yet, and obviously, there's capital improvements that will be taken out of that too. So 3 million dollars-ish we have sitting in reserves. However much of that is capital, I'm not sure. I would propose that we could take 135,000 out of that and then lower the assessment from 30% to 25%.
Is that a motion, Paul?
That's not a motion, I just put it out there for any comment or discussion.
Would we end up doing that for all future projects or just this one?
I mean, I think you'd have to, you'd be changing the policy, so you would use it for all projects.
You mentioned how much it would save the residents who are directly impacted. How much burden would it add to everyone else that's paying the other 70%? What would their costs go up?
Well, it would be nothing if we take it from the stabilization fund, but obviously, that's not a long-term solution.
Yeah, so that's a question I have, is on a project like this, if you take that, and you don't take it out of stabilization, because if we don't do that for every project, we have to plan for it. If that other, if that money you take off of the burden of the residents who are directly impacted getting new sewer, water, street, curb, gutter, and everything else, if you put that all on everyone else, what does that increase, the level they're already paying?
Well, I mean, it'd be a 3%.
3% on your.
35,000 would be about 3% of our levy increase.
So, so right now, how much would, how much would we pay if I live in Northwest Cassin? How much am I paying for this project versus someone who lives directly on it?
Right now, you're paying about 85% of it.
Percent, yes, I'm like, actual dollar figure. You brought up dollar figures for people that are benefiting directly, but you haven't brought up any dollar figures specifically for people who don't benefit directly.
So I don't have those numbers, maybe just the engineer can run it quick.
It's going to be about 2,500 dollars per utility customer, so includes commercial, residential, and industrial.
So it'd be a dollar, 100 dollars a month?
Correct. 6.2 million, I think we're about 2,500 customers, so yeah, 2,500 dollars a year.
A year, so it's 200.
Yeah, it comes from something, and it comes from your sewer and water bills and everything else.
That wouldn't be precise because it's.
Yeah, yeah, it varies, yeah.
Based on valuation now. Or if you did it by utility customer, I mean, that'd be, that'd be across the board. But valuation typically, you know, it goes by value, and so it would be, some people would pay more than 200, some people would pay less.
So, so the difference is 135,000, 5% difference, using the same 2,500, comes out to 54 dollars a year, right? Does that sound about right?
Can you say it one more time?
The 135,000 difference that I'm proposing between the 30% and 25% split up amongst the 2,500 accounts is 54 dollars a year, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So if Paul's proposal of reducing it down from 30 to 25, the gap that we'd have, something may or may not come out of stabilization fund, equals 54 dollars per year for every utility customer we have, commercial, sewer.
And that would be added on top of the people that are already paying the assessments in the past projects. So they're paying that fee plus another 54 dollars.
Yes, we have a fair amount of assessments that are still being paid at 30%, so, yeah.
So they'll be, they'll be paying, not double, but they'll be paying twice. So paying their assessment monthly or paid off, but then they'll be paying another fee. And then if we don't have, with the, with the state talking of shortcoming, which, you know, it's all over the news that there can be a deficit, if we have to cut LGA, then we have to raise our levy in the first place to cover that cost just to function. But then this, so not only will you have that burden, you'll have the extra burden of another 54 dollars a year or more, just on, because that's just for one project, and we got two, two more?
Uh, yeah, so I assume this same conversation would apply to the other project that we're going to be.
So then, then you're adding on that.
Correct.
So now you're adding even more to everybody. During, when we're looking for a shortfall, looking for a deficit, so you're already an extra burden on everybody, that's.
But it's, I would say that it's a small burden on everybody compared to the large burden of 90 dollars a month for the people in the affected area. And then the people that are going to be in the next area, not maybe next year, but the year after that, and then the people the year after that.
But you still have the burden on the ones that are paying the assessment, and now you're giving them an extra burden to benefit the extra people, but they're getting punished.
The only way we can make progress to phase it out is somebody's going to have to get punished, right? Just like when we first phased it in, somebody got punished because the people who didn't get assessed never got assessed, and then the people when the assessment started, the next person did, right? So however long ago that was, maybe we don't remember who those people were anymore because it's been so long. But every decision we make is going to hurt somebody and help somebody else. So I, I get why we don't want to raise taxes on everybody, but I also, 9,000 dollars that we're sending to the people in Southwest this year, that especially when it's going to be a 9% interest rate that they're going to be paying over 15 years if they take the default, which I assume most people do. I don't, I don't actually know the numbers on it. Do most people just take the default and just?
I would say probably about 50% of them pay upfront, and then the rest of them would probably slide, a lot of them would slide into that. Some people pay it off in maybe a few years as opposed to 15. But, I mean, depends on the project too.
Right, the people that aren't paying it off upfront are probably the ones that are, have less means to do so.
Of course.
And the ones that are most impacted by having to pay the extra 90 dollars a month. So that's, that's how I feel about it, so.
Any other comments?
Do you keep Paul's perspective on it? But having gone through the assessment process already, I can also see the other side of my neighbors who, some of them are still paying it off, and now on top of it, you're asking the ones that, as you put it, were the most burdened by the assessment to begin with, to pay more. So you're hitting those who already have been really burdened again. So that's my concern on it.
Everyone's going to have to pay the burden eventually. If we lower it for this project than the next one, the people for this project are going to end up paying more for other projects. It's, it's really a double-edged sword there. You're ending up paying it, you're just paying less for yours and more for everyone else's. Then how do we determine, do we have to change the formula for how we decide what roles go next based on who pays what?
My other, sorry, my other concern is what does this do to the money that's in the funds that Paul's proposing taking this from now? Because a lot of that has been set aside for other projects, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's true, but at the same time, you know, as a council, you make decisions about where money gets put. And, you know, the only thing I would add is I highly encourage us to maintain some level of assessments. You know, having discussion with, I did have with Mr. Rubini about it, and nothing I didn't know, but it's definitely the easiest authority, the 429 bond series is the easiest authority and the most beneficial for us as a city. So I encourage you to continue to utilize that. Whatever rate the council chooses to, to set at, or a policy they pursue, I think we should continue to utilize that as, it gives us more options. You know, stabilization is, it's been used for other things before, library took a big chunk about a couple of years ago. You know, I've had some discussions with staff about utilizing some of it for the water tower this year to reduce some of the impact of water rates. But if that money is there for you guys to use for whatever you decide that's most prudent. So, you know, with, with that in mind, I mean, I certainly can support whatever you guys decide to do, and we'll make, we'll make a budget work, whatever the council decides to do, so.
I haven't looked into what other cities are doing because I'm, I'm more in favor of keeping the assessment. So have we looked into what other cities our size are doing assessment percent-wise? Are they doing the same process? Is it at 30%? Have they had a longstanding, like what?
Well, it's kind of all over the board. Some cities are higher, and some are lower. Most cities maintain assessments as a tool to fund bonds. There are ways to work within that. I mean, at the end of the day, some of these you have to pay. You know, whether it comes from utility rates going up higher, if you subsidize it with that a little bit, or if you shift it from fund balance, you know, there isn't any way around it if you're doing a project. But I would say most of them are between 20 and 35. You know, a lot of them have dropped over the last five years because people want to do more projects and they want less opposition from the public. You know, 10 years ago, Wanamingo was 100%. And now I think they're down to 50 or 40 or something like that. And they didn't do any street projects for 10 years because nobody wanted to pay 100% assessment, which is understandable, but, so, I mean, suffice to say, there, there's lots of different possibilities and options, so.
I also note, and I don't have any data for this, but most county projects and state projects probably don't get assessed to the property owners. People who live in county roads, their street improvements or road improvements are just spread out amongst everyone, including us, right? 'Cause we pay county taxes, too, so, um...
And townships also, um, use either special assessment or a different way to special assess, the same thing, so order the district, but...
Brandon, would you say this 30%, would, would you say it's comparable? Is it a fair number?
Um, again, we are replacing a private sewer lateral, a private water bane, we're adding a new service, a subdrain, replacing a concrete driveway. Um, your attorney and I have been at court arguing for assessments as part of the third, fourth, and fifth. I think what the first, uh, one that was contested, uh, we won that, um, and the other assessments went away, and that was the same sort of thing we're doing. So, um, cities have lost assessments, but we won, so we think we were fair to the people, and I think the judge ruled on that, so we're not changing anything or haven't changed anything. Um, so I think I'm comfortable with it. Um, I think it feels right. Um, I think it's what we've done in the past, but, I mean, you're welcome to change it. If, you know, I, the only thing is, if we reduce it down to 25%, the pace that we were going on, the, the number of projects that we're doing, if we wanna maintain that, we do away with assessments and view it as a revenue, uh, 'cause it's really revenue from our citizens, right? 'Cause all of our revenue comes from our projects. We're, we're, it's about $250,000 a year, so how do we recover that revenue? Do we increase property tax, $250,000? Do we increase sewer and water? Um, how do we do it long-term? 'Cause it's $250,000 a year that we're gonna lose, and either it's pay me now or pay me later, or I have a different way to pay for it, take it out of one pocket or the other one. It's, I think that's the conversation. Um, and I guess that goes back to, there's private development, private benefit as part of the project, that's the test of what we do, so I think it's valid in that sense. But with that said, cities have lost assessment cases before, and the metro's kind of shying away from them. Um, so I guess it kind of is what it is. I don't have a strong opinion either one, one way or the other, other than, you know, Mike Bubani, the fiscal consultant, who I have a lot of respect for, says keep men for fiscal reasons. Well, then, that's kind of where I would maybe default from, if I was a council member. Um, and I like standing in front of assessment hearings next week? No, but I don't like you guys being underneath the meat guy to either make the decision, so, um, I think it's also some consideration, too, and I get Paul's, spread it all out, we're one city, I, I get that perspective, too, so it's, just think about all the different sides of the discussion, I think would be what I would ask as a council person, so...
And I would say, Paul, when they, I remember when they did Sixth and Main, and they were doing it on footage, um, front footage as opposed to residential equivalent.
I think we're gonna do that again on the first and second project?
Um, second and third.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we are doing that, because that's commercial property, a lot different. I think where Melanie was going, it was more of a house is a house is a house, and if you had like a lot on the end of the cul-de-sac, you still had one water sewer, and you were still in the neighborhood. So, I think that generally, our recommendation is keep it one residential equivalent, hence why that's what's before you today in the current project for tomorrow, or next week, excuse me. Um, so I think that's where that perspective came from. Commercially, it's all walkies, you have size of buildings, you know, the front edge, how does that work for commercial industry? It's a lot different ballgame, I think, so I'm assuming you're going there.
Yeah, what I was gonna say is, like, the houses that sat on the corner of Sixth and Main, and this was, what, 2008?
Yeah, I think so.
Something like that?
Something like that.
They were assessed, uh, in the, in the neighborhood of about $12,500 back then. So, we have definitely done work to try to equalize and make the assessments more fair as we've gone along, like with the third, fourth, and, third, fourth, and fifth, and some of the other projects. Um, so again, I get where you're coming from, my concern is the revenue shortfall that will result.
Yeah, I don't, I don't argue that the amount that we're charging the assessments unfair. My argument is, is that I would rather have it be spread out amongst everybody all the time, constantly paying these smaller installments over 20, 30 years, rather than having to pay over 15 years with a 9% interest. And granted, the last few years, it hasn't been a 9% interest, but this is gonna be a really bad year 'cause the prime rate is so high. So, the, this $9,000 is very similar to the REU on 57, but the interest rate is about like 4% higher than the ones for that one.
I mean, I, I guess, you know, from my perspective, if interest rates are what's one thing you're concerned about, you know, um, there are ways to change the policy that would be, you know, that'd be a change of the policy. When I was in Blue Earth, we used the, the rate of the bond plus 1.5%. So, when the city issued the bond, if it was a 4% bond issuance, then they would add 1.5% on to it. Cassin's policy is, you know, prime rate plus whatever it is, 1.5 or whatever.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if that's a big concern, I mean, that could be something that could be adjusted without changing the percentage number, and other cities do that. So, I mean, I, like, I'm not opposed to making adjustments if that's what the council wants to do. And, I mean, I know 9% is pretty high, so, I mean, that isn't something that we necessarily would have to lock into, and it might be a, a benefit immediately to adjusting, you know, that interest rate down. You know, we'd still have revenue coming in that we need to make the, the debt service work, with providing that better interest rate for the, the, you know, residents, because, I mean, we're not trying to make money, that isn't the, that isn't the goal. Obviously, we wanna pay for the project, that's it. So, I mean, if that's something, and I appreciate you bringing it up, 'cause, I mean, that's one thing I thought of, is when I was in Blue Earth, we did, they were, I mean, there was years when people definitely did not pay it off, because the bond might've come in at two and a half, and they were only paying four. You know, for a lot of folks, that was cheaper than they could've gotten a loan at the bank for, at the time. You know, here, it is a big number, so maybe that's a smaller tweak that would be, be helpful. I mean, uh, that provides me with the tools I still need to, to get the issuance placed, and maybe would provide some immediate relief for the residents.
I'd like to see that, Tim.
If, if that's something that we can do, because, I didn't, I didn't consider that an option, because when we have the public hearing and approve the assessments, it specifically delineates the interest rate, so...
Sure.
But what you're saying is, is it would still be variable until the point that we actually do the bonding, so they, they wouldn't know the interest rate at the public hearing.
Well, we create a guidance, and what we could do is, you could, you could be a lagging indicator, you could say, okay, we could, you could utilize the last bond that the city issued. You know, and, I mean, in Blue Earth, what we did is, we didn't, the way, they had budget flexibility, so they didn't actually bond for the project until it was already done. So, they'd say, okay, I mean, usually what we do is, we, we borrow for the project first, and then use that money to pay the project. In, in Blue Earth, we would use our fund balance to float that until the project was done, 'cause it was nice, because it gave us an exact number. It was like, okay, well, it came to exactly 4.21 million dollars. Whereas, as, as Brandon knows, like, we have the quote, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna be exact, because change orders happen, this happens, that happens, you know, whatever. So, I mean, that could be one way to, you could say, okay, what was the last issuance? You know, and I think that'd be the fire hall, so that would've been 4%, I think, something around that, that number. Use that, you know, carry it forward, say, okay, we're gonna use the, the last one that we did. Now, we did a street project every year in Blue Earth, so it was, it was a good, steady indicator. I mean, I think 5.5 is a heck of a lot better than nine, and to me, like, that, that makes more feasible sense to me than, than making a lot of other alterations that people are uncomfortable about, if we wanna make incremental improvements to this policy.
I think that's a, unless there's some drawback that I'm not aware of yet, that seems like a common sense thing that we should pursue, um, regardless, um, but not, I don't consider that necessarily as an alternative to working on lowering the assessment rates, but I'd be happy to support that as well.
May I just add? Um, I think we, staff would probably recommend that we set the interest rate at the assessment hearing, um, so maybe what we could do of, moving forward, if, if you guys would consider, um, have the administrator look at the past bond issuance, and then we can come up and say, the last ones are this, we have a little bump in the interest rate, but maybe we just keep it flat, um, and then we can have that as maybe a staff recommendation to say, "Council, you had us look at this at the assessment hearing, we're here tonight to go down from the 7% or 9%..."
Nine.
"...to a certain number. Do you concur, council?" And then that can be lowered at that assessment hearing, and we'll set it as we set the assessments, 'cause we need to set that, um, 'cause we need, can't change it after the fact, or we could go down later and just get a little cumbersome from our perspective, so...
I mean, I guess, you know, based on the council's feedback, like, we do need direction, so some sort of direction from council, what does the majority feel is the proper course to pursue, so that we can, you know, we have two weeks to formulate all of our, you know, assessment, final assessment roles and things like that, a little less than that, 'cause I expect them early, Brandon, you know?
All right, I didn't go.
There you go.
I'd be in favor of, of looking into lowering the interest rate, 'cause I think that, that is going to be a concern for this part of town.
Do you need an official motion?
Well, I mean, I think a motion on that, I mean, is that, I mean...
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
We have a motion for the staff to look at lowering the interest rate, we don't know exact number yet. Are we still, do we bring the numbers back?
We'll have it at the, at the...
Next meeting.
All right.
We have a motion?
Would this motion also mean we're gonna change the official policy, or is it gonna really be for this next upcoming project?
Well, I mean, my anticipation would be we would be changing the policy, uh, because, I mean, I think we would want that to apply to all the projects, at least certainly for this year. I mean, I, I hate to change horses in the middle of a stream. I think that the folks who are on this Southwest should be treated the same as the ones on all the other projects that we have this year. If the council decides to make other changes in the future, every council can do that, I don't wanna hamstring them, but I do think that we would wanna keep it uniform this year, for sure.
So, I have a second to motion to looking at reducing the interest rates in our assessment policy.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pulsed? Okay, motion carries.
And I will go ahead and, I guess, and then make a motion to reduce our assessment policy for the projects this year from 30% to 25%.
We have a motion to lower our assessment values, or percentage from 30 to 25. Do we have a second? Hearing none, motion fails. Thank you. Back to engineer.
All right, just to be perfectly clear, council, um, so staff will present, um, an interest rate, um, within the assessment hearing, um, that we feel is appropriate, are gonna be recommended from a staff level, and that'll be right in the assessment, you guys can concur with that through your adoption of the assessment role.
Yeah.
Is there a review of that?
And that'll be included in the policy, it'll be a policy change.
Yeah, because it's presented, so, you know, we made a decision to look at it, which I'm a little uncomfortable, 'cause what does look at it mean? So, I just see if staff's comfortable with the number, that's what we'll recommend, and you guys can tweak it if needed. Okay?
We'll have a recommendation for them.
Yep, perfect. All right, thank you, just wanted to say there. Um, so last item, um, project updates. Um, water tower contract was signed tonight by the mayor and the administrator, um, so that project's gonna be moving forward there. Likely, we loosened that schedule up a little bit, they're likely gonna be constructing the infrastructure, the base, um, this, this summer into fall, and then constructing the tower over, went, over the winter, somewhere we did at the fairgrounds, and then painting it in 2026. So, I'll let the fire chief know, uh, where we're at with that schedule, uh, but that will be moving forward. Um, we do have an assessment hearing next meeting, uh, for the Southwest project we